All right, we call the meeting to order. This is the Loudoun City Council meeting for November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. We'll call it to order at six-thirty. First item of business is invocation and pledge all leaders in the invocation. Councilmember Riddick, listen, please stand. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, as we bow in your presence, we want to say thank you for all the many, many blessings that you've given us. Your word tells us to be thankful in all things. We thank you for, Lord, I thank you for the opportunity to serve alongside these council members and serve our community. Thank you for our staff and oh, we thank you for our directors, those workers that keep us safe and, and keep our city clean. And, Lord, our utility workers, all those that do so much for our community here. We just thank you for the opportunity to, to serve our community. We pray that you'd give us wisdom as we make decisions, pray that we would seek your will in all things. And God, we want to pray for those that's lost loved ones. We just pray that you'd comfort them as only you can that feel your presence, pray that you'd comfort their hearts. Pray, God, that you'd lead God directly through this meeting, pray that we'd honor you with our decisions in Christ's name. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seen. Roll call, please.
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dixon.
Here.
Councilmember Cardwell.
Here.
Councilmember Newman.
Here.
Councilmember Riddings.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, I'm not going to go with the mayor's welcome speech. I'm just going to say welcome to our city council meeting. If you need an agenda, they're on the table there at the back. That's going to be your guide to how we conduct our meeting tonight. And I don't think anyone signed in.
No, sir.
So, just welcome, thank you for coming, and we'll go with our next item, which is recognition of visual. We did that. Adoption of agenda, we have your agenda printed out. We've got an email out to you, it's our motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As I said, there was no citizens' input, so we'll go straight to approval of minutes from the regular meeting in October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five.
Make a motion?
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, second, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item is resolutions. First resolution is approving the city of Loudoun, section one-twenty, one-twenty-five cafeteria plan for employees. Do we have a motion to approve that? Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, second, any questions? This was discussed after workshop. Morris for IRS requires it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is authorizing participation in the Tennessee Main Street program designated a city official to represent the city on the Main Street Loudoun Governing Board of Directors.
I'm going to make a motion.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions about what this motion's doing? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is authorizing use of competitive sealed proposals for the removal of two pedestrian bridges and the replacement of one bridge with a new shared use path structure in Legion Park. Remy presented this very well at the workshop.
Make a motion?
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, second, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is authorizing two squad vehicles to be considered surplus. It's a pleasure of council.
Make a motion?
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, second, any questions? Both of these Dodge Chargers have over one-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand miles, so, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is adopting the strategic plan.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, second, any questions? This was covered, covered this in many meetings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now the work starts on that, now that it's approved. Next item is a resolution adopting a plan of services prior to annexation of a certain territory upon written consent of the owners and incorporation of the same within the boundaries of the city of Loudoun, Tennessee, approximately five acres, four-forty-eight Hope Drive.
I'm making a motion.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, second, to adopt the plan of services? Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is a resolution to annex this certain property upon written consent of the owners and incorporate the same within the boundaries of the city of Loudoun.
Make a motion.
Five acres, four-forty-eight Hope Drive. Have a motion by Councilmember Newman?
Second.
Second. Motion, second, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Ruth Alder, for your patience in that. Next section is ordinance on second reading, which is amended the zoning map of the city of Loudoun pursuant to thirteen-seven-two-oh-three and two-oh-four, property located on four-forty-four, four-forty-eight Hope Drive. This is zoned currently A-two, it's going to be go re-zoned to R-one, low density.
Make a motion?
Have a motion, or a second?
Second.
Motion, second, first and second, are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Dixon.
Ah.
Councilmember Newman.
Ah.
Councilmember Cardwell.
Ah.
Councilmember Riddings.
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Harris.
Ah.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Then ordinance on first reading, adopting the International Building Code, International Fire Code.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Have a motion, do we have a second? Okay. Our building codes, employee Travis explained this pretty well, so, any questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Cardwell.
Ah.
Councilmember Newman.
Ah.
Vice Mayor Dixon.
Ah.
Councilmember Riddings.
Yes.
Mayor Harris.
Ah.
Thank you.
So we need a public hearing?
Uh, may we, may I suggest on December fifteenth at six-twenty-five?
Okay.
Thank you.
That reminds me that that meeting had been moved up, correct? Right, so it is not on the twenty-second, like the fourth meeting, that, that's advertised at the fifteenth, so make that note. All right. Other business, there is some appointments, a couple of appointments I need to make. One housing authority. Currently Ross Millsap serves on there, he's agreed to serve for another five years. And also on the housing authority, we had to have a resident that was over there, Ms. Virginia Houston, she has agreed to serve for another five years as well. And then on the planning commission, Ms. Debbie Hines has tenured her resignation from that committee. And I'm replacing her with Abigail Allhouse, who is on the historic zoning. She has agreed to serve on both. And she's a, she works, she's an architect that works for Main Street Architect, is in Sweetwater. She was very excited to, to do that, so it'll, that'll, that'll be a, a good asset, I think, to the planning commission. Last fuel quote comparisons, it's.
Can we burn on those, or?
No, those, those two are point.
Okay.
Just, this is basically your information.
Okay.
Fuel quote comparison, October twenty-ninth, the low deliver quote for purchase of fuel was received from Rogers Petroleum for seventeen thousand six ninety-three. November twentieth, it was also by Rogers Petroleum for nineteen thousand three eighty-one. All right. Let's go ahead and do, jump over and do our council member reports. Okay, you got executive session down here at the end anyway. Department reports. Daniel, you have anything to report for us?
Uh, it's too much, I know that depending when or whether you're talking about the game of sand, we're ready for it. We just talked about what's all pre-treatment and all that, so no worries there.
Okay, thank you. Interim manager, Remy?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everybody about our Christmas events coming up with Loudoun Live. We're helping Loudoun Live with the festival, Christmas Soul Loudoun Festival of Trees, December fifth on courthouse lawn. We'll have Lunch with Santa, December sixth at the Loudoun Club Pavilion, Christmas in the Park, December twelfth at the Municipal Park. And the Christmas parade, of course, December thirteenth will be, you know, run from Carter Street down to Grove Street on Mulberry. And also, we'll, we're going to be going to bid soon for our full filtration system renovation, so that'll be going out soon, you'll see that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Let me see, Chief Brewbaker, Michael or Lori, you have anything?
Uh, no, sorry, just thanking for your decisions made tonight.
Yeah, again, we want to, you know, thank the staff for working on that, and, and again, Miss Alder for her patience and persistence in pushing this forward, so. Melissa, you have anything?
No, thank you, Remy.
Okay, now, if you're going, do you have anything to?
I think I sent out to you all the Kingston Fossil Plant Tour. I think you all would like to attend that, I've got to let Travis know.
What was the date on that again?
Um, the date of it is twelve-nine-twenty-five. That's about, I think it's at ten o'clock. If I didn't send that to you all, I will, they told me I could bring anybody that we wanted to. It's not as bad as some of the places for the security, so. We, but we need to let Travis know by probably the end of this week. If you'd like to go, he'll, he'll get whatever information we're going to get to get to TBA Security, and then to secure all the PPE for all that, so everybody's covered when we get there.
Okay, all right, council member reports.
Uh, nothing to report, just happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Okay, there'll be a lot more coming from the RAC and.
There will be a lot more coming on the RAC for lunch, too.
Okay, Vice Mayor Dixon?
Uh, yes, I do, Historic Zoning Commission. Uh, we had applicant two-sixteen, applicant certificate of appropriateness for installation of exterior alterations. Property owner Bill and Sherry Watkins, at three-oh-four Commerce Street, that was approved by the planning commission.
What was the change?
The windows.
Yeah, yeah.
Putting in new windows, putting in doors, and later on, they'll be back with more in-depth for some.
He does a step to the back, too, I think, you know, the back of.
Front and back.
Yeah.
Uh, applicant two-sixteen, applicant certificate of appropriateness for installation, features electric lighting. Uh, property owner Redskins Cafe, Jay Alawati, that was tabled till this next month due to some lighting that they were wanting to put in. And we did withhold lighting at some of the other facilities, our business in Loudoun, and we wanted to get a update on what we need to do with that. So, we'll, we'll hear that next month. And application one-seventy-seven, uh, for a plan of service for the city of Loudoun. I don't think we did anything with that.
Okay.
We did not.
BZA, you got something?
Yeah. Uh, the planning commission, uh, we had it public hearing, applicant one-seventy-eight, review proposed annexation of plan search for four-forty-eight Hope Drive. Advocate property owner Ruth Diane Oller, uh, that was approved by the planning commission. New business, uh, application one-seventy-six, review of proposed annexation of plan service for Matlock Road East. Advocate property owner, Marcellus Juricks, uh, that was approved by the planning commission. In a public hearing, applicant one-seventy-seven, review of proposed annexation, planning service for Dry Valley Road, applicant and property owner Dry Valley Realty LLC. That was not recommended. And that was turned down by the planning commission. Advocate two-oh-three, special use review request to amend off-site traffic signal plan. State Route seventy-two, Commercial Park Drive, applicant Gresham Smith, behalf of Race Track Incorporated, property owner Krupa Properties LLC, and Clint Thompson, trustee. Uh, that was a motion to table this to further information. Uh, applicant two-nineteen, preliminary plaque review, Oak at Sparrow Valley. Advocate property owner C M H Homes Incorporated, that was approved by the planning commission.
Or is that? We were red, clean red.
That was, which one was approved?
Oak Sparrow.
It was a variance, it was a variance on.
Yeah.
The slope, yeah, that was all that was approved.
Okay.
The, the other was, was tabled.
Advocate two-twenty-three, uh, one-thousand-three-hundred-forty-two foot variance for the maximum length of cul-de-sac to be increased from six-hundred feet to one-thousand-nine-hundred-forty-two feet. Municipal and regional subdivision regulation Loudoun, lower city field, deputy Loudoun down. That was denied by the planning commission. Advocate two-twenty-three, two percent variance to be increased from roadway slope from ten percent to twelve percent. The applicant was spoke, the Oak at Sparrow Valley, applicant property owner C M H Homes Incorporated. Uh, that was approved.
So what was the difference between the first one that was approved and that one?
It, it was not approved, it was tabled.
It was tabled, the first one, the mission was tabled.
I thought there was a one before that, you know?
Uh, the applicant, the one that, uh, the, oh, C M H Homes was, that was denied.
The cul-de-sac.
That was the cul-de-sac, what was the one before that?
Before that, one-twenty-nine, Oak, the Oak at Sparrow Valley, property of C M H Homes. That was close, that was tabled.
That was the plaque.
Yeah.
That was the plaque, that was tabled. What was the one on for special use, the red light?
Special use request to amend off-site traffic signal.
Race track.
Of seventy-two.
What were, what were they asking? They were asking to put the, the light at, is it Commercial Park Drive?
Yeah.
Right there, at, across from Wiggles, and, uh, Wiggles was here, and Race Track was here. And I think that was, I think that was tabled as well to get more, try to get a solution to, Wiggles and Race Track can both agree with. Now, that one. It's got to come back to city council. I'll bet say, so, they can't issue a special. No. Request. It's got to come back to city council. Okay, I'll bet say, because that was part of our. Yes. Agreement that had to have. If anything changed, it had to come back. Yes, okay. Right. I'll make sure, because. Yeah, it will come back to city council, and we. So that was, when you said it was denied, or was it ta, you said it was tabled?
The, uh.
Yeah.
Tabled for further information.
Okay, so the action from the planning commission would be what, just to give a recommendation?
Recommendation to, to the city council.
Okay, yeah. And along, oh, you have another one, go ahead.
This is the Board of Zoning Appeal, applicant two-twelve, twenty-one-forty-five Chestnut Lane. Amended, amended five percent variance to increase the driveway slope from ten percent to fifteen percent. Uh, applicant regional bail, property owner David Whitmore, that was approved. Uh, new business, applicant two-fifteen, one-fifty-seven Smokey View, a two percent variance to increase driveway slope from ten percent to twelve percent. Uh, applicant Sutton Homes, property owner Mike and Pam Allen, that was also approved. Uh, applicant two-seventeen, nine-hundred Mockingbird Lane, three-point-five percent variance to increase the driveway slope from ten percent to thirteen-point-five percent. Advocate Sutton Homes, property owner Chip and Tara Lawson, that was approved. Advocate two-eighteen, one-eighty-one Purple Iris Place, three percent variance to increase the driveway slope from ten percent to thirteen percent. Valant Custom Homes, property owner Christina and David Fugate, that was also approved. That's all I have there.
Okay, that was five-hour planning commission meeting.
Longest I've ever seen in my life.
Yeah. Since then, on Friday, I did receive a letter just for information from Mr. Barnett, the owner of the property on Dry Valley. He did ask to remove his request for annexation, so. He asked, he asked to remove that from, from us, so. All right, Councilmember Cardwell?
Uh, got a whole bunch. While you told him that today at four-thirty, we approved the following resolutions. We approved the Loudoun Utility Board one-twenty-five cafeteria plan for employees. We approve authorizing revenue requirements for analysis and cost of service study for water and wastewater utility services with Jackson Thornton. We authorize revenue requirements analysis and cost of service study for gas utility services with Jackson Thornton. We authorize the energy riot thermostat rewards program with TBA. We approved the power supply flexibility agreement with TBA. We awarded a bid for labor material package for Matlock Bend substation grading and site preparation. Authorize an agreement for professional services with Ryan Engineering PLC, develop a water waltz management program. We approved the change order one and two for Matlock Bend tank and Robinson Springs booster pump station upgrade. We awarded a bid for phase three of the water main replacement program. We tabled the authorization for the purchase of a Ford four-fifty diesel and closed circuit TV truck, and also tabled the agreement for the, uh, the sewer AI corporation for the software. We awarded a, a bid for the Honda pump station improvement project. We authorized task order fourteen for barge design for wastewater treatment plant improvements. We amended the pay classification according to the, the manager's reorganization of the, of LUV. We adopted the strategic plan, and we approved natural gas rates from one-thirteen to one-twenty. Also, on, uh, last Tuesday, the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee met. We're continuing our work on modification, proposed modifications to the historic district boundary. We're looking at including all the, the vacant land, which was the, the project downtown, to include going down to Cedar Street and, um, up to, uh, west. Um, one area we're looking at is where you cross the bridge on High Street. The houses, they're in the little triangle between, uh, College and High, we're, we're sort of investigating. We're also looking at adding the, I think there's six or seven houses on the west side at Ward Avenue. Those, they look like craftsmen-style homes. Um, so if you have any input or any other, uh, talk, um, let me know. We're going to continue to talk about that at our December meeting. The tourism board met on seventeen November, and, uh, myself and, uh, Remy attended. Um, they're looking at doing a film on Loudoun to promote, uh, everything that's good about Loudoun. Loudoun are going to put it together. Uh, one of the pushbacks we gave was that we wanted to have input to that film, and also sort of the, to review it before they go final. If they're going to do a film on us, we want to see what it's, what it's about. They're going to cover Christmas in Old Town Loudoun on the fifth. However, they weren't going to cover the parade. We pushed back on that, and we're looking at alternative ways that we can do filming of it, and they can add it to the, uh, to the film, and trying to get on to look at not just one event in Loudoun, but the Christmas season in Loudoun, and promote that, because as Remy said, we've got so many different events. Don't just promote one, promote the whole season in Loudoun. And also, we're starting to work with them to, uh, start promoting the concert series we're going to have, starting with the, the Levitt Grant, and that's all.
Okay. Councilmember Riddings, you have anything?
I don't mind your opinion.
Um, Kathy, about that, give an update on the Levitt Foundation grant and the.
Sure, so we got word on November eighteenth that we were awarded the Levitt Foundation grant. I don't think it was going to be a big surprise, because I think we had such a big showing in the public voting contest. Lot of work going forward. February first through the third, there's a training session in California. We're eligible to send up to three people to that training session. They will pay for the hotel, as well as give eight-hundred dollars per person in reimbursables, so we'll be talking about that. Tammy's probably likely the one to go for Loudoun Live, but Kevin and I need to talk a little bit about the city side. And, because I think somebody from the city definitely needs to be represented at, with possibly even Blair from Visit Loudoun County might be able to go to that as well, so that's what we're working on right now. TV stations, I think you had an interview today, you and Tammy, so they're starting to pick it up, and they're starting. I'm already getting emails from musicians and bands that have played at other Levitt Foundation events, wanting us to consider them, and I'm just telling them there'll be a steering committee put together, uh, and that will be the deciding factor, and, and we will let them know at that point. So, December fifth, please come out to Christmas in Loudoun Celebration of Trees. We have thirty-one sponsored trees that will be on the courthouse lawn. Thanks, Remy and his staff and his team. We couldn't do it without Parks and Rec and the city and the county, and county maintenance is going to help us. Of course, Remy's department will be helping as well, we'll have volunteers out next week. So, it's going to be a big event, we've got a whole, probably two hours worth of concert lined up as well. Santa and Mrs. Claus up on the shelf, also going to have the Grinch, he confirmed today. Uh, we've got George, uh, Bobby will be signing his Little T Vol books, he's got three of those. He'll be at, we hope to have had Smokey and the Cheerleaders, but it's finals week, and Smokey, the dog apparently goes to school, and we couldn't get him, so we tried to do that. Uh, there's Christmas tree eating contest, it's going to be a good event, I hope a lot of.
Not a real tree. Little Debbie.
Yeah, the Little Debbie's.
When will we find out who's like, with our concert events? Do we pick them, and I suppose, do we pick artists?
We need to sit down and talk about who's going to be on the steering committee, because we need.
So we actually pick them?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
And they, they give us criteria on?
Yes, and they'll talk about marketing, this training will help on the marketing of it and everything else. We're going to get two-hundred-and-fifty tote bags that, you know, to use as some promotion as well. There's a lot that's going into it, and I think, you know, I think it's going to be really good for Loudoun. I think we have such a great opportunity here to, to shine. I think we're going to do a great job, so.
Exactly.
I think Loudoun Live, I will tell you, their annual membership meeting is going to be December sixteenth at five-thirty at the Firefly Lane down to Moore Street, our newest business, and I hope y'all all can come out. I'll send you something, uh, to put it on your calendar, but I hope y'all can come out and see what all we've done this year, uh, and to see what all we're, they're working on.
The sixteenth?
The sixteenth.
I was the day for the courthouse.
For the what?
Yeah.
The December fifth, starting at six o'clock. Uh, one thing I didn't mention is Loudoun High School's culinary arts, uh, have their food truck there doing refreshment, and this is actually going to be a fundraiser for them as well. We have some, hope our ornaments get here in time, but we have some brass ornaments that are on order that commemorates the courthouse and it being opened up, uh, this being the first year, it's back open since the fire. We'll be giving some to our sponsors, but we'll be selling some as well, so we've got about a hundred ordered.
The, if we didn't, we have Blair pull the numbers for the Halloween.
She did, Misfits in Mayhem, we had about twelve-hundred people. Now, they could have probably more, because kids do not have, a lot of the younger kids don't have cell phones, so the numbers trace apps on cell phones, so if it was just parents, you could probably count that there were other kids there. So we had about twelve-hundred, which is great for, you know, down, down Moore Street.
And also gave us what numbers from River Falls.
Oh, good, that's fast.
So what, thirty, thirty-five hundred?
Okay, yeah. Again, we had people at adult card.
It's a whole day, four hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, four hours.
Yeah, so it also showed us where people were coming from, it did show us, you know, that people, actually, some stayed, went to Cinco, some went to Big City, it tells you where they go after, uh, some.
Seems like Tammy said that a third of those that came were from out of town.
That's right, we are as far as West Florida. Uh, now, was that Florida people that have moved here, still have phone there, I don't know, but.
So area code.
We'll be out there, but we had them all the way from Etowah, uh, Rome County, we had Rome County, Monroe County, so, man, so. So it was good there, uh, I think we've got a momentum going, and they just got to keep that momentum after the first year and keep it moving, so. But we're excited, pray for good weather next Friday, that week from this Friday, and appreciate all y'all do, and you'll be hearing more from us, I'll be here back in December, of course, we'll have this master plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and I'm going downtown to courthouse right now to talk about Loudoun.
Okay.
So see y'all.
Just some announcements I had. Again, December tenth is the Christmas lunch, I think I mentioned that before, just to make sure you know that, at eleven o'clock at the Masonic Lodge. And also, a gentleman from Spectrum, Nick Padless, uh, he represents Spectrum, and, uh, he said they've hooked up over fourteen-hundred residents with fiber internet that is outside the network, so he would like to come to our December eighth workshop and just give a, uh, he's going to come to LUV workshop, give an update about that. That, that's, it's over fourteen-hundred, which that's, that's good. I mean, that, that's, that's something that we've been working towards with LUV and, and Spectrum, so. He's going to, he's going to be here for the four-thirty meeting, have some refreshments. He's gonna, he's gonna be here for the four thirty meeting, have some refreshments in between, they're providing that, a little reception area, uh, uh, kinda deal, and then he's gonna stay for the six thirty meeting, that's, meets everybody's schedule, okay? Uh, birthday or anniversaries, and you'll have birthdays in just a second, uh, just a few anniversaries, LUB, Bill Collins, water, wastewater treatment plant, five years, David Garner, customer service, twenty-four years, and Jason Brown, the director of support services, twenty-nine years, and the city, Bobby Beeman, in the IT department, four years, Trey Klimmer, Loudoun Police Department, six years, Brandon Hill, facilities and maintenance, eleven years, Anthony Garner, our coast department, twenty-seven years, Mike Brubaker, he would be here, but he just got married, so we'll give him a pass for, for the night. Director of public safety, twenty-seven years, so thank those, those employees for their service, you got a few birthdays, I think, and then we'll go into executive session.
All right. Uh, from administration, Steve Rix, November twenty-eighth, Brooks Redd, November third. Police department, Chris Klimmer, November third, Joel Martin, November eleventh. From fire department, Mike Brubaker, November the fourth, Juan Medina, November eighteenth. From public works. Sean Vivins, November twenty-third, Kenny Geider, November thirtieth, and Gabe Hampton, November twenty-fifth. Electric department, Roddy Houston, November the fifth. Water department, Everett Bailey, November nineteenth. Water plant, Jason Brannum, November twenty-first, Kyle Talent, November twentieth. Tony Thompson, November twenty-seventh. Utility board, Enno Campbell, November nineteenth. Myself, Tim Dixon, November nineteenth, and council member Kenny writings, November seventeenth.
That's our birthday, Kenny, that birthday, my senior.
Okay.
All right, we're gonna go into executive session at this time, it is seven oh two, yes, you're welcome to stay, or you can go free to leave.